Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the August 18th regular meeting of the Pickwa City Commission. Would you all please check your cell phones, make sure they're turned off, and then stand and join us in the Pledge of Legions?
I pledge to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, my nation and her God, indivisible, with what we do justice for.
Thank you. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Fess.
Here.
Commissioner Martin.
Here.
Commissioner Vogt.
Here.
Commissioner Terry.
Here.
Commissioner Wilson.
Here.
I have two proclamations tonight that I would like to read. The first one is for Prostate Cancer Awareness Month, and it reads, "Whereas prostate cancer is the most commonly diagnosed non-skin cancer in men and the second-leading cause of cancer deaths in men, and whereas every day approximately 240,000 men are diagnosed with prostate cancer in the United States alone every year, one man every 2.63 minutes, roughly 30,000 die each year from the disease, one man every 17.52 minutes. And whereas one in seven men are diagnosed with prostate cancer, African-American men are at the highest risk for the disease, with a rate of one in four men. African-American men are 2.5 times more likely to die from the disease. And whereas education regarding prostate cancer and early-detection strategies is critical to saving lives and preserving and protecting our families, and whereas all men are at risk for prostate cancer, and we encourage the citizens of Pickwa to increase the importance of prostate screenings. Now therefore, I, Lucinda Al-Fess, Mayor of the City of Pickwa, Ohio, do hereby proclaim the month of September as Prostate Cancer Awareness Month in the City of Pickwa." And I'm going to give this to the city manager and have him get it to the proper persons. The second proclamation is for National Preparedness Month, and I'm going to present this to our law director. Whereas National Preparedness Month is sponsored by the U.S. Department of Homeland Security, the Ready Campaign, and Citizens Corps, National Preparedness Month is held every September, and its purpose is to encourage Americans to prepare for emergencies that can occur in their homes, businesses, and communities, for any type of emergency, including natural disasters and potential terrorist attacks. And whereas this year FEMA and the Ready Campaign are asking citizens to take action now, make a plan with your neighborhood, your family, and your pets, plan how to be safe and communicate during disasters or incidents that can impact your community. And whereas the Ohio Department of Public Safety Emergency Management Agency also promotes public awareness by reminding all Ohioans to take time to coordinate simple steps to prepare for emergencies, including getting an emergency supply kit, making a family disaster plan, being informed about the types of incidents that can occur in their communities, both natural and man-made, and supports National Preparedness Month with its campaign. Don't wait, communicate. And whereas the Ready Campaign has established four universal building blocks of emergency preparedness: be informed, make a plan, build a kit, and get involved. America's Prepare-a-thon is a grassroots campaign for action to increase community preparedness and resilience, and individuals are encouraged to sign up for Preparedness-Athon and the National Day of Action. And whereas citizens are encouraged to review preparedness steps, participate in citizen preparedness activities, visit the websites of the Ready Campaign at www.redy ohio.gov at ohio underscore EMA for tips on how to be informed, make a plan, build a kit, and get involved. Now therefore, I, Lucinda Al-Fess, Mayor of the City of Pickwa, Ohio, do hereby proclaim the month of September 2015 as National Preparedness Month, and I call upon all Ohioans to recognize the importance of preparing for all potential disasters and emergencies by participating in appropriate preparedness programs and activities scheduled throughout the month of September. And Stacy, I'll give this over to you. At this time, we're going to go into a public hearing for DP&amp;L and Vectren franchise agreement. I will need Commissioners' motion to go into the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to go into the public hearing. All those in favor signify stating aye.
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 At this time, our clerk of commission is going to read an oath. Anyone in the audience who plans to speak to this, if you will stand up, you need to be sworn in before you speak on this issue.
Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God in your testimony regarding the Vectren franchise agreement? If so, answer, "I do."
Thank you. At this time, I'll turn the public hearing over to our law director, Stacy Wall.
Thank you. The Charter requires a public report at a public hearing on any franchise agreement, and that's why you're here tonight. So I'm going to go through the report that I've prepared for the commission. As background, the city entered into a franchise agreement with Mercer Gas and Fuel Company on November 15, 1887. That agreement was later assigned to Dayton Power and Light. In 2000, Vectren purchased the natural gas assets of DP&amp;L. After the original agreement in 1887, the city commission adopted ordinance 30-00 only to reflect that Vectren and not DP&amp;L was the holder of the natural gas assets and the franchise agreement needed to be amended to represent the correct owner. No other changes have been made to the 1887 agreement other than the name. Charter Section 106 governs the procedural process involving the franchise agreement, which requires a public report containing recommendations and adequate public hearings being held by this commission. A public hearing is being held tonight, and then we will have three readings of the ordinance on the next three regularly scheduled meetings. The 1887 ordinance has had no changes to its terms and conditions. Vectren's legal counsel contacted me to request changes due to the age of the agreement primarily, but they were also in the process of standardizing franchise agreements with all municipalities for operational purposes. Vectren submitted a proposed draft of those new terms and conditions. The city engineer and myself reviewed those terms, negotiated them with legal counsel, and came up with what you have attached here tonight to your proposed public report. As I said, the engineer was involved in the review of the terms, and one thing that she has noted is Vectren has really been doing what we're asking for for the past several years. There's been a great working relationship with them, and they agreed to everything that we had requested despite wanting to standardize the process with all municipalities. The significant changes to the agreement include that there will be a five-year term with five-year renewable terms, a six-month notice period for any termination, the ability of the city to request yearly construction and maintenance plans covering the natural gas facilities in the public right-of-way, the obligation to secure a permit prior to the commencement of construction in the right-of-way, the requirement of a performance bond, and the obligation of Vectren to move or adjust facilities at the city's request when needed to accommodate any municipal improvement. Again, these changes are all in accordance with what Vectren has already been performing and at the satisfaction of the engineer's office. Vectren would also be required to follow any other city, state, or federal requirement or regulation in addition to the franchise agreement terms. So if there are no questions regarding this report, attached what you had received was a proposed ordinance explaining what the terms would be on the franchise agreement. The ordinance is actually the franchise agreement, but the way the charter is written, it, the franchise agreement becomes an ordinance, so that's why format or procedural you see in front of you in ordinance listing the franchise agreement. Again, the real purposes, the original agreement was 1887, and no changes had ever been made, so it clearly was needed. And we have here tonight with us Colleen Ryan, who is the president of Vectren Energy Delivery, who would be glad to testify or answer any questions you may have.
Commissioners, do you have any questions? Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak to this agreement?
Nick Alexander, 713 Roosevelt. I just noticed that the agreement or whatever isn't actually in that big packet thing, so we're all in the audience at least flying blind. I assume the commissioners got them. I know this election cycle, I haven't received any of the documents like I did two years or eight years ago during the election, so I'm curious, you're asking about any questions about the agreement, we can't see the agreement.
Well, we're going to have three readings.
Yeah, we're not asking for questions tonight about the agreement essentially, only because this is a public hearing to, I guess, ask questions about the proposed franchise and what happens with Vectren, but that agreement was posted on the website, so it was posted for the public.
Right. Well, you keep saying it was attached, so I'm flipping through, it's not attached. That's my take on that. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak to this? If not, I guess we have no questions for you, Colleen. And at this time then, we will close the public hearing. And I need a motion to do that, Stacy.
So moved.
Okay. I need a second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to close the public hearing, and all those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Right now, we will move to our regular city commission meeting, and the first item on our agenda is the consent agenda. And tonight, the consent agenda includes the approval of the minutes of the Pickwa City Commission meeting of August 18, 2015, and also Resolution Number R-118-15, and this is a resolution of appreciation for William J. Liddy as he retires as a journeyman line crew leader at the power system. And I'd like to read this resolution, which states, "Whereas William J. Liddy has retired as journeyman line crew leader with the power system department, and whereas his retirement follows over 30 years of faithful and dedicated service to the city and its citizens, now therefore, be it resolved by the commission of the City of Pickwa, Miami County, Ohio, all members elected there to concurring that. Section 1, in recognition and appreciation of the public service of William J. Liddy as journeyman line crew with the power system department, this commission tenders its unanimous and respectful tribute by this resolution, which shall be a matter of public and permanent record. Section 2, this resolution shall take effect and be enforced from and after the earliest period allowed by law." I've signed this, it has the seal of the City of Pickwa, and I'm going to ask the city manager if he will get that to Mr. Liddy. He couldn't be here with us this evening, so at this point, we're ready to have a motion on the consent agenda.
I move we approve the consent agenda.
We need to change wording in the minutes to reflect that Gary Koenig is a candidate for the Fifth Ward Commissioner meeting.
So we need to amend the minutes, Judy? Is that what you're asking?
Yes, well, these have been amended, but this also was a typo that I saw. So it says Fourth Ward, and he's a candidate for the Fifth Ward.
Did you get that, Becky?
No, I didn't. I didn't hear what she said.
It's under 1015.
Okay, then I'll need a motion to amend the minutes to read that Gary Koenig is a candidate for the Fifth Ward City Commission seat, and if I could have a motion to amend that.
So moved.
You don't have a second. All those in favor of the amendment state aye.
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 Opposed, the same sign. Minutes have been amended. Now, could I have a motion to accept the consent agenda, please?
I move we approve the consent agenda.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda with the amended approval of minutes. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Martin.
Aye.
Mayor Fess.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Commissioner Vogt.
Aye.
Commissioner Terry.
Aye.
The consent agenda has been adopted. Moving to old business, we have ordinance number 10-15. Tonight is the third reading of this ordinance.
An ordinance to levy special assessments to pay for the cost of nuisance abatement assessment.
Ms. Welker will provide the staff report.
Thank you. Each year, the city abates nuisance conditions on properties, including mowing grass, trimming trees, picking up trash, demolishing structures, things that are in violation of the city's nuisance code. What happens is the property owner receives notification that their property is in violation and what they need to do to correct that. If they do not correct it, the city hires contractors to complete the work, and then the property owner is billed for those services. If they do not pay that bill, the city has the option to place those costs on the property taxes for each property, and that's what this ordinance does. It places those abatement costs onto the property taxes. And if you'll note from the last meeting, we did have several property owners pay for their assessments, and they have been removed from the list.
Thank you, Amy. Commissioners, any questions on this?
You know, they, we put this on their taxes. If they're not paying to get the yard cut, are they paying their taxes?
Yeah, sometimes not. Some of these properties are delinquent in property taxes as well, and the city, we are looking into how to better deal with some of those properties that are delinquent on their taxes.
It's my understanding that you can't get a clear title on a house, on a property, until all the assessments and taxes are paid up, so I guess we've got to wait, don't we?
Yeah, we, sometimes we wait quite a while to get the money back, but if the property does sell, you're right, the assessments and the back taxes have to be paid as part of that transfer, so we do eventually get the money.
Have we ever tried to get a hold of Hope Chapel, since it's a church?
We have, and really, all of the members that were kind of the executive board, so to speak, of that church really have no interest in that issue at this time. The church is defunct. There's been no one to step forward to take ownership of that property. We've been in contact with an attorney that represents a mortgage company who at one time loaned money for the property. They basically are not pursuing any action on the property, so it's really one of those that's just kind of in limbo.
But isn't Hope Chapel, don't they have multiple churches all through the United States?
I don't know that it's affiliated with any church that has other entities. I'm not aware of that.
It's listed on one down in Florida.
That's the mortgage company, and what that is, it's a company, it's not really a mortgage company, it's a company that just specializes in funding churches, and they are not pursuing foreclosure on that mortgage. We've spoken to them, and even though they're listed as, you know, the owner of record or an entity that has an interest in it, they really don't have an interest in it at this time.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Amy.
I just wondered, since most of these are grass-related, would you tell everybody again the height that it becomes a violation of the grass?
Yeah, it's eight inches.
Okay, all right.
Didn't take long to get eight inches this year.
No, it was very wet.
Okay. Anyone in the audience wish to speak for or against this ordinance? If not, since this is a third reading, do I have a motion to adopt the ordinance?
Move to adopt ordinance number 10-15.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt ordinance number 10-15. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Terry.
Aye.
Mayor Fess.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Commissioner Vogt.
Aye.
Commissioner Martin.
Aye.
Ordinance number 10-15 has been adopted. Moving to new business, Resolution Number R-119-15.
A resolution authorizing a contract with Fifth Third Bank, JP Morgan Chase Bank, US Bank, Unity National Bank, and Main Source Bank to serve as a depository for the public funds.
Ms. Holt-Sappel will provide the staff report.
Thank you. Section 135 of the Ohio Revise Code requires governmental entities such as the city to have in place depository contracts with the financial or banking institutions in which the city would like to deposit funds. Before you tonight are five current banks that we have funds with, and we are requesting that you renew those contracts by putting in place new five-year contracts that would begin October 1 of this year. We do not always have funds in each of the banks, however, and we're not required to, so we always shop around for the best rate and which institution will provide the best service throughout that five-year contract period. Also, if there would be another institution that we would like to deposit funds with, we may come before you at any time in the future to implement a new contract.
Thank you, Cynthia. Commissioners, any questions? Anyone in the audience wish to speak to this resolution? If not, could I have a roll called, or a motion?
Move to adopt Resolution R-119-15.
Second.
Moved and seconded to adopt Resolution Number R-119-15. Would the clerk call the roll?
Mayor Fess.
Aye.
Commissioner Terry.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Commissioner Vogt.
Aye.
Commissioner Martin.
Aye.
Resolution Number R-119-15 is adopted. Resolution Number R-120-15.
An emergency resolution authorizing a purchase order to Best Equipment Company for the repair of trucks for the Underground Utilities Department.
Mr. Johnson will provide the staff report.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Due to the recent unforeseen malfunction with our VACCON, we are asking to increase the expenditure amount not to exceed from $35,000 to $60,000. This will allow us to repair the vacuum compressor assembly unit on the VACCON and hopefully cover any future repairs for this truck and other trucks serviced by Best Equipment this year. We use Best Equipment Incorporated for the repairs of the VACCON, the EnviroSite camera truck, the single-axle jet truck that we have. All these pieces of equipment are very specialized, and Best Equipment is the sole source for parts and repairs. Due to the age of these vehicles, again, the warranties have all expired.
Thank you. Any questions for shape? Commissioners?
Are these, any of these broken down right now?
Yes, it is.
I guess that's why it's an emergency ordinance, okay.
It's inoperable.
Which one is broken down?
S-34, it's the vacuum truck. It's the newer one of the two that we have.
Is there any other questions, Commissioners? If not, anyone in the audience wish to speak to this?
Nick Alexander, Roosevelt Avenue. Wasn't there a vacuum truck fixed earlier this year, or am I thinking of a different vehicle?
It's, it's, yes, that's correct. It's the same one.
So it, is the problem that broke down the same problem that broke down the first time, or different?
It's different. It's a different issue.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments? If not, do I have a motion, please?
Move to adopt Resolution R-120-15.
Second.
It's moved and seconded to adopt Resolution Number R-120-15. Would the clerk call the roll?
Commissioner Martin.
Aye.
Commissioner Terry.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Fess.
Aye.
Commissioner Vogt.
Aye.
Resolution Number R-120-15 has been adopted. Resolution Number R-121-15.
An emergency resolution authorizing a purchase order to prograde excavation and demolition for the stormwater repair on East Water Street for the Underground Utilities Department.
Mr. Alexander will provide the staff report.
Back on June 15, the city was made aware that at the intersection of East Water and Race Street, there was a severe-sized sinkhole in the middle of that intersection located there. Upon inspection by our Underground Utilities, it was determined that it was a severe pipe break in our stormwater sewer there. After some deliberation on how to tackle the issue and with the approval of the city manager, it was determined that it was beyond our scope of ability to do a repair at that location, especially due to the, you know, public safety that could happen in the middle of the intersection there as well. At that point, it was determined that we need to call in a special contractor that is specialized in this type of repair to come in and fix it as quickly as possible and as efficiently as possible. So tonight, in this resolution, we're asking for the reappropriation of funds of roughly $62,317 is what we're asking to be re-appropriated.
Thank you, Devin. Commissioners, any questions?
Was this the brick storm sewer down there?
That's correct.
Are we going to do something to either line it or shore it up or something, because it's been in there a long time, and if it's broke there, it's probably going to break somewhere else?
We are actually going to be looking at evaluating that storm sewer that runs up Race Street that is aged, and we will be looking to see what kind of options there are for this type of damage doesn't happen in another location again.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone in the audience?
We're familiar with this company, this prograde excavation.
Yes, we've actually used them on a couple other projects, and they had a good rapport in those projects, and they actually did a really fine job at the, at the current project that they just did for us.
Good.
Yep.
Anyone in the audience? If not, do I have a motion?
I move we adopt Resolution Number R-121-15. Second.
Thank you. Resolution R-121-15 has a motion and second. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Fess.
Aye.
Commissioner Terry.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Commissioner Vogt.
Aye.
Commissioner Martin.
Aye.
Resolution Number R-121-15 has been adopted. Resolution Number R-122-15.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to, excuse me, to contract with the Miami County Public Defender Commission.
Ms. Wall will provide the staff report.
Thank you. This contract is approved by the commission annually. It is for 2016. The city contracts with the county's public defender's office for public defender services. Any defendant who believes they are eligible can get an application for the public defender. Upon filling out that affidavit, they are then determined if they meet the financial guidelines and would be appointed a public defender. There are three public defenders in the county, and primarily two of the three serve for misdemeanors, and then all three will handle the felonies as well.
Thank you, Stacy. Commissioners, any questions of Stacy?
So they, there are two qualifications. They have to be indigent by some guidelines that they make and city resident, correct?
They just have to be charged with an offense in the City of Pickwa.
Oh, okay.
Because you could live anywhere and commit a crime here, but the guidelines are not really black and white in terms of a number, because what happens is everyone in the household is considered for income, as well as, do you own property? Do you receive social security? So once everything's considered, and then there's deductions taken, they come out with a final number, so you can't say, do you qualify, what's your income? You have to look at all the sources behind that as well. And then they decide based on that affidavit if you qualified. I know one of the requirements is you have to submit recent pay stubs, so you have, it's not just your word, they're taking verification from the employer and other sources to prove that income level.
Okay.
Also, that this contract did not increase from last year, so the price remains the same of the contract, and the public defender does not represent And the public defender does not represent anyone on a minor misdemeanor. That's by law. Minor misdemeanors do not carry jail time. So, anything that is jailable or potentially jailable, that's when the public defender gets involved.
Thank you. Anyone in the audience wish to speak for or against the resolution? If not, could I have a motion, please?
Move to adopt resolution number R dash one twenty-two dash fifteen.
Second.
Moved and seconded to adopt resolution number R dash one twenty-two dash fifteen. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Martin?
Aye.
Mayor Fess?
Aye.
Commissioner Terry?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Commissioner Vogt?
Aye.
Resolution number R dash one twenty-two dash fifteen is adopted. Resolution number R dash one twenty-three dash fifteen.
A resolution authorizing to increase the initial annual purchase order for Kirk National Lease for heavy equipment repairs for the Public Works Department.
Mr. Brookhart will provide the staff report.
Thank you. The Public Works Department would like the commission to consider increasing the purchase order to Kirk National Lease for our heavy equipment and vehicle repairs from twenty-one thousand dollars to forty-five thousand dollars to cover additional repairs that may be needed in the upcoming months. Kirk National Lease has worked on our equipment for several years, and we have been very satisfied with their turnaround on our equipment and their competitive, competitive rates.
I should, I should explain that the purchase orders are issued for a certain amount of money, and if we're getting at the end of that amount in order to, we ask for the increase in the purchase order so that the funding is available, so when we do have a breakdown, we can have them fixed immediately instead of having to wait till the next commission meeting to come back for approval. So, that's the purpose in being proactive. I think we're anticipating very possibly additional equipment breakdowns throughout the year, so.
So, do we think that the forty-five thousand dollar number is gonna get us to the end of the year?
I anticipate that to get us through the rest of the year. We have looked at the trucks and evaluated them. I don't want to touch that. I don't want to go over that, but you never know. When you have aging equipment and they're out of warranty, anything can happen on those vehicles, and some of the repairs can be very costly. When you look at our freightliner dump trucks that you see out or paving and plowing snow, you can get into several thousand dollars very quickly on repairs on those vehicles.
So, do you think the extra, what, twenty-four thousand is gonna be enough to get us through the winter?
I hope so, yes.
If not, we'll be back to increase the purchase orders.
Okay, that'll work.
It's simple as that.
Thank you, Brian. Any more questions, commissioners? Anyone in the audience have any questions? If not, could I have a motion, please?
Move to adopt resolution R dash one twenty-three dash fifteen.
Second.
Thank you. Have a motion in a second to adopt a resolution number R dash one twenty-three dash fifteen. Would the clerk call the roll?
Mayor, excuse me, Mayor Fess?
Aye.
Commissioner Terry?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Commissioner Vogt?
Aye.
Commissioner Martin?
Aye.
Resolution number R dash one twenty-three dash fifteen has been adopted. Resolution number R dash one twenty-four dash fifteen.
A resolution authorizing to increase the initial annual purchase order for Dick Lumpkin's Auto Body for a one-ton and under equipment repair for the Public Works Department.
Mr. Brookhart?
Yes, the Public Works Department would like commission to consider increasing the purchase order for Dick Lumpkins from twenty-two thousand dollars to forty thousand dollars to cover any additional repairs to our light and medium-duty vehicles in the upcoming months. We have used Dick Lumpkins over the past couple of years and have been very satisfied with their turnaround and repairs on our vehicles.
This is the same issue we just had on the last?
Same issue that we had with the larger vehicles.
A slush fund there, in case.
I don't anticipate going over that, but with getting close to the purchase order, I want to make sure that we have sufficient funds to get us through December.
Thank you, Brian.
Is this paint and body work?
No, it's mechanical work.
No, it's, it's not just paint and body work. It's, it's mechanical work on our, on our light and medium-duty trucks.
Is there any paint and body work in this?
If I would do paint and body work on any vehicles, I would get prices from three different body shops to have that work completed.
Well, because I was just wondering, because you would think that our insurance would cover any damage to the trucks so that we wouldn't incur paint and body work costs at all.
Any, yeah, it depends.
I could jump in there a minute. Any, any damage to a vehicle from an accident or whatever it is, the city pays the first twenty-five hundred dollars on each vehicle.
Oh, wow. Okay.
We, we have a deductible also, so.
Okay.
Thank you, Brian.
Yes.
Anyone else, commissioners? Anyone in the audience wish to speak to this resolution? If not, could I have a motion, please?
Move to adopt resolution R one twenty-four dash fifteen.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt resolution number R dash one twenty-four dash fifteen. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Martin?
Aye.
Mayor Fess?
Aye.
Commissioner Terry?
Aye.
Commissioner Vogt?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Resolution number R dash one twenty-four dash fifteen has been adopted. Resolution number R dash one twenty-five dash fifteen.
A resolution authorizing a purchase order to Cascade Engineering for the purchase of recycling carts.
We'll call on Ms. Welker again.
Amy's got a show and tell.
Thank you. Yes, this is the show and tell portion. We are asking for funding here to Cascade Engineering, who provided us with our recycling carts, the sixty-four-gallon size earlier this year in May. We've had multiple customers ask for a smaller cart. So, we're looking at the thirty-two-gallon cart, which is the exact same model, just quite a bit smaller. Some of our older citizens, single people, feel that the sixty-four gallon is just too large for them, so we've had multiple requests for a smaller size. So, we're looking at placing a small order to accommodate those citizens that would like a smaller cart.
Thank you, Amy. Commissioners?
So, so how are they becoming available? Is this first come, first served? Do you have a list of people who are waiting for a smaller cart if we get one?
Yes, we, we have a list going. We have about fifty customers currently on our list. When the last Spirit newsletter went out, we, we let it be known that we were collecting a list of anyone that might be interested. They can call our office to get onto the list. We were trying to gauge how many we might need to order, so currently we have around fifty. So, we'll, we'll order quite a bit more than that, because what I anticipate happening is, once we roll out those fifty, some of the neighbors and other people will see them and then want the same thing. So, this, this purchase order would allow us a lot of flexibility in, in the amount that we might need. The contractor assured me that it would only take three to four weeks to get them in, so if need be, we could make multiple orders throughout the end of the year.
Then what happens to the larger carts?
We'd, we'd collect those back if, if they currently have one and do not want to use it. Now, a lot of the people that are on the list currently either gave their, their cart back already or, or just didn't take one. So, they, they currently are either using their own container or they're just not recycling.
Okay, so we're not gonna have a glut of big containers sitting around?
No, no, and we, we have a few still on hand. In, in case one would break, we can replace it right away before we send it back for repairs, that kind of thing. So, plus, you know, we have people moving in and out quite a bit, so we have carts available that we can get new customers a cart right away.
Then, is the smaller cart going to be red and blue like the big one?
Yes, it'll look exactly like the larger one.
Okay.
How do you, how do you deal with the tracing, the number?
Yes, when, when the cart is delivered, we document the ID number on the cart, and we store that information so that if one would become lost or damaged in some way, we can track our inventory.
But what about the ones that come back that already have numbers? Do you have, can those be removed easily and replaced?
Yeah, we, we just.
Just reassign the number?
Yeah, we reassign the number then, yes.
That makes sense.
Can our, can our trucks pick those up?
Yes.
Okay.
I tell you a warning, don't throw something in that big one if you want to get it out later, because you have to stand on your head. I found that out last week, so. Any other, anyone in the audience wish to speak to this?
Nick Alexander, Roosevelt Avenue. Now, over the.
Nick, direct your comments to the chair, please.
Well, I'm looking at the items, they're right there. Makes it easier for me to focus on them.
Excuse me.
Over the next ten years or so, I know somehow the garbage can I have had for the last five years has barely held on, been hit by a car a couple of times. Over the next ten years, I would expect that the larger ones are going to begin to degrade. Will the smaller one be the new default for ordering, or will the city be going back to the larger ones for all default orders over the next ten years or whatever?
Well, I think over a period of time, people have a choice of sixty-four or thirty-two.
Right, but what will be?
But if something happens to the large one in the next ten years, they wear out, for example?
Yes.
They'll get another large one.
But, I mean, when the city is ready to order more, will the large one still be the city's default, or will the city be moving to the smaller ones?
I would say we would stick with the larger one. I think the majority of our customers have been satisfied with that size.
I mean, I know I could fit everything in there if I save up everything for about four weeks, but it just seems, maybe the smaller might be better for the long-term usage.
Just my husband and I, we recycle a lot. I fill mine up, Nick. So, you know, a lot of people do. It depends on how much you recycle.
But you don't have to put them out every week. You put them out on your pole.
Oh, yeah, I, I don't tend to, I tend to save up all my boxes for a couple of weeks before I fill it up, but it seems like the smaller would be better in the long term. How much is the price difference to the city between the two sizes?
There's about a six to seven-dollar difference.
By percentage?
Uh, they're forty-two and thirty-five.
So, that's about?
Seventy percent.
Seventy-eight percent? Yes, cost-wise, it doesn't seem that much of a difference, but it just.
Yeah, I mean, the majority of our customers, we have only had fifty people interested in the smaller one, so the majority, I think, are happy with the size. You know, a family of four or something fills that up quite easily, actually. They're, they're, they're coming in pretty full as we pick them up.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else? If not, could I have a motion, please?
I move to adopt resolution R dash one twenty-five dash fifteen.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt resolution number R dash one twenty-five dash fifteen. Would the clerk call the roll, please?
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Commissioner Martin?
Aye.
Mayor Fess?
Aye.
Commissioner Vogt?
Aye.
Commissioner Terry?
Aye.
Resolution number R dash one twenty-five dash fifteen has been adopted. We've come to the point in our meeting where we open the floor for public comment. If you'd like to address the commission, please come to the podium in the center of the room, state your name and address and your comments.
Good evening, my name is Jim Brookhart. I live at one zero zero three Westview Drive, and I was one of the event organizers of Down the River, Down a Beer. What I, what I'm holding here is the trophy, the highly coveted Broken Paddle Award that Jeff Lang and Scott Phillips made for the canoe racers that were down on the river. We probably had thirty-five or forty people down on the river with Jeff and Scott and Ron Jackson, and I don't know how this happened, but Jeff Lang, he was one of the winners. I don't know, I don't know, I don't know how that happened. But, but really, I'm here to say thanks to you, the commissioners, for approving the use of Lock Nine Park for people to see the river up close and personal. Jeff was really pleased, I know, with the turnout down on the river. I was more on the beer event portion, and we had huge, huge community support. Unity National Bank sponsored our tasting glasses. French Oil Mill Machinery Company authorized the building of the river fire rings. It provided a really dramatic end to the event. Played some fun music, Smoke on the Water, Johnny Cash, Ring of Fire. So, as they were lighting the torches as, as Ron and Jeff paddled out to, to light them in the middle of the river. And then WPTW provided huge sponsorship and provided promotion. Tim Worth was down there all day long announcing the canoe races, helping out with playing some music before Jared and Justin Yount's Reflections, a local twin duo played, and he, he just did a phenomenal job. Other sponsors, Hartzell Propeller, Crayex, Coverman Staley Dickerson, Miami Valley Steel, Murray Wells Wendlin and Robinson, Pickwa Beverage Center, Atlantis, they did shirts that turned out really cool. P and R Specialty, but the special sponsors, Main Street Pickwa, Lorna Swisher, who was one of the event organizers, Pickwa Arts Council, Jordan Nepper, and Preserve Our Waterways with Jeff Lang. And, and also Star Gephardt was one of the other event organizers. Mary Beth Borhurst sold tickets. She provided the bins that we held, held the beer in at the tables. Bob Heckman did the pottery for the commemorative mugs. And then we had all kinds of other people. We probably had fifty volunteers throughout the day, either pouring or serving beer, running the auction station, selling water. I'm neglecting to mention the food people, the food vendors, Beppe Uno, Bob Evans, Mulligan's Pub, Three-Eleven Drafthouse, Winans Chocolates and Coffees, and I'm missing somebody. Uh-oh.
Did you mention Suzie's?
Bob Evans. Dobbo's Delights. Dobbo's Delights. So, so it was a huge community effort. Probably had three hundred and fifty people there. And the money that will be raised will go for seed money for a river steward program. We hope to partner with either Edison or the Career Center. Those, those talks are still preliminary since Edison had a little turnover in their presidency, wanted to make sure that, that they were okay with that. So, I just wanted to thank everybody, all of our volunteers who did so much, and, and you all again for opening up the use of Lock Nine Park.
Jim, I just want to say, wasn't this kind of a seed, your idea?
Yes.
Yeah, well, I, I was not able to be there. Unfortunately, we were out of town. However, I have heard nothing but wonderful things from people who were there and others who weren't there that said they wished they would have been after they heard what all was going on. I think that's gonna grow to be quite a large event.
I hope so. And, and again, I think the, the people that I talked with, I, I think they all had a really good time.
That's what I hear.
And, and, and the weather, the weather was perfect. It was just perfect. And so, if, if you stand up on the levee and you look out over the river, both upstream and downstream, watching the canoes and kayakers, and then at the end of the night when they lit the river fire rings, that was spectacular. It was really awesome.
Great, well, thank you for all that you do for that event.
Thank you very much. Thank you once again. Yeah, I'll answer any beer questions you guys might have.
I've got, not really a beer question, but I heard one complaint, and I agreed with it, that you only do this once a year. That was the only complaint I heard, so. It was a great time, and everybody was having a wonderful time, so.
Yeah, I think it's got the potential to be a big, big event here in Pickwa.
Good, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address?
Good evening. Lisa Dotson, three twenty-five North Main Street, owner of Harvest Pantry Bulk Foods. I'm here to tell you that we are open. We opened our doors August twenty-second. I'm here to thank you all for your support. I've seen many of you in my door, in, in the store, and I thank you for that. I thank the city for the support that, that we've received. We've been well-received by the community. It was four short months ago, or four long months ago, that I was before you telling you what the building was going to look like. I hope that you're pleasantly surprised. If you haven't been inside, please stop in. I'll give you the grand tour, but we're, we're real happy with, with the outcome, how it looks on the outside and the inside. So, if you have opportunity, please stop in. So if you have opportunity, please stop in. There's all kinds of product there for you. There's something for everybody.
Lisa, that's what I was going to ask. Could you elaborate a little bit on what you have? And I think you have a deli in there now?
We do. We do have a deli. We have meats and cheeses. They are coming, they are from the Holmes County area. I have personally taste tested almost all of them, and they're very, very good. So like I said, if you come in and you see me, come see me, I'll give you a little sample. But we have quality products. A lot of the bulk foods that are there, I can't even name them all, but there are so many different categories. There's snacks, there's candy, there's, you know, the grains, the, there's just all, there's over 500 products that we have available. All the spices, yeah.
I have to say that the interior and the products that you have are excellent. It's very impressive, so.
Thank you.
Very well done.
Thank you.
And we would have expected no less from Rod and Lisa Dotson.
That's right. That's right. Great, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? If not, we'll go to the city manager's report.
Just one bit of information tonight. City offices will be closed on Monday, September the 7th, for the Labor Day holiday. Trash collection will be one day behind during that week. In other words, Mondays will be on Tuesdays and Fridays on Saturdays. So remember that you're one day late next week. And that's all I have, unless you have any questions.
I don't. Going to start with Commissioner Vogt tonight.
I don't have anything tonight. Thank you.
Okay. And Commissioner Martin?
Mine's quick and easy. I'd like to thank all of the businesses and the volunteers that help with special events here in Pickwa. They make Pickwa a truly special place to be.
Thank you, John. Judy?
Well, I need to congratulate Bill Liddy on his retirement and wish him the best. And he's going to keep busy and train some future linemen for the county. Or the city, I guess I should say. We went down to the, Down the River and Down the Beer and met several people from out of town. And gosh, they were from Chicago and Michigan and Florida and I don't know how many people that we met that were not from here, that were visiting. And we're very impressed with the river, with the Lock Nine Park, with the whole evening and the friendly faces that they found in Pickwa. And so it was, it was just great to hear. The comments were all very positive. So great to hear from people that are outside our community that came down. And especially, they looked around our downtown and were impressed with our downtown. And so it's exciting to know that things can go on from here and be bigger and better. I, we also met with the Board of Education one evening in a work session. And it looks like they're going to ask for some ideas from the public for the school building sites, the sites that will be available when the buildings come down. So maybe people who are in the community might be racking their brain, getting some good ideas about, if they have any good ideas, about how those properties would be best used. And I know that they're going to be listening for any kind of input. I think that's all.
Okay. Commissioner Wilson?
Since we met last time, we've had two businesses opening downtown. We had Winans down at the old Pickwa Deli call building. And it's a great, great asset, great visual from the outside. And you can actually see them working in the factory there through the windows, kind of like the old Lucille Ball thing that they had, if you remember any of that. But that was really well done. And it's really helped the looks of people going through town. And of course, Harvest Pantry opened up as well. And I did taste test their Whorehound, and it passed all the tests that I had. So, but what I like about the Harvest Pantry is they have a lot of prepackaged things in very small amounts, so you can try a lot of things to be sure you like it before you, I mean, it's not like you're buying five pounds of butter or something. It's small packages, so you can try a lot of things. And I would encourage anyone to go to both places. And if you go to one, you might as well go to the other. They're very close. So I guess that's all I have.
Mayor, I did, I forgot one item I need to mention. There's this little football game coming up next Monday.
Scrimmage.
Is that kind of like Virginia Tech and Ohio State?
Yeah, there's a lot of bets.
And which side are you on?
There's a lot of bets going on. Of course, everybody knows I'm a Virginia Tech grad.
We know that full well.
I may be, I mean, depending on how this comes out, I may be wearing Ohio State stuff at the next commission meeting.
We would welcome that, Gary.
Or other people may be wearing Virginia Tech stuff, so we'll see.
I think probably.
Should be a lot of fun.
Two years in a row is too much to hope for, Gary.
I couldn't resist saying so.
Well, we know where your loyalties lie. All you have to do is walk into your office, and there's the VT everywhere. But we do forgive you because you're a good city manager. But how you can support anybody but the Buckeyes is just beyond me. Can't wait for that game.
I'll have to change his contract.
We can, we can. We could put in there, require him to be a Buckeye fan. Okay. I mean, he's never been quiet about it. I think in your interviews, you even told us that.